Hey, thank you guys. It is September 25th at 4:05. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll go through, we'll call for planning commission members. Howard Tripp?
Here.
Abby Dahman?
Here.
Joey Edwards?
Here.
Jamie Seifer. And then Heather Land here. County Commissioners, Commissioner Munch?
Here.
Commissioner Marcella? And Commissioner Puebler. Any changes to the agenda? Other than maybe we start with new business?
That sounds great.
Anne, can you let me into the room?
We have minutes to approve from September 11th, which I think the three of you were there, but I was not. There's a motion to approve those.
Edwards moves to approve the minutes from the September 11th. Planning zoning meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Um, Stephanie?
Sounds great. So we are working on putting together a facilitated conversation on 1041 review. And so the dates, tentative dates that we're holding open are October 30th and 31st. Do we have any updates on who we've filed in?
No. I am hoping that there might be opportunity for something earlier. I think when we were talking about the first kind of upcoming deadline, Monday and Tuesday, I think Monday and Tuesday has been better days. But if we're beyond the 3rd, then it's all open. So I think she's gonna come back after getting a response on the engagement finalized, which it has been. I'm waiting for more dates.
Okay, awesome. So we'll be sending out information on facilitated conversation on 1041s, which I think is going to be really exciting and informative. I'll just share and actually others like Heather and Howard probably know better than I do because I've never had an opportunity in almost my 10 years with the county to do a 1041 in Lake County. So, but we've done them on the new wastewater treatment at Mountain Valley Estates. And there was like a finding of no significant impact at Climax on a couple different operational changes there. So it hasn't been a tool that we've used in Lake County much, but we want to revisit and see if it's a, if it should be. And where and when and how. We want to start looking at 1041 review. So we'll be sending out updates. So right now, the board has just approved the engagement with the facilitator to and the technical expert to come in and just talk about it. And we're going to be working with a firm that originally helped write and adopt our 1041s. So that's pretty exciting. Sarah, Commissioner Munch was able to locate her and her firm. And so there's gonna be great technical expertise coming in with an expert that has, certainly has expertise in administration of 1041s. So great opportunity coming there. The other update that I would have is everyone knows our next planning commission meeting is October 2nd, or 3rd, excuse me, 3rd. The 2nd is a holiday for the county, but the 3rd, and it's gateway. The staff report should be out tomorrow to give everybody plenty of time to review it and take a look at it. I'll just report out that it was a well put together application after we got through the completeness review. It really wasn't very lacking in any kind of technical information for a conceptual submittal. So it was pretty complete, which was nice. And, but I just encourage all of you, I will be gone at the ICMA beginning of Thursday night, and then I'll be gone all next week in Austin at a conference. So if you have questions when you get the sketch plan, staff report, please reach out to discuss anything that's in it and any questions that you may have. I'll be presenting to you all from Austin at the neck for that meeting. So Bryce and Cece will be in the room. We're gonna go over the staff report this week together so to make sure they don't have any questions and they'll certainly be here as resources for you physically. And I'll be presenting a PowerPoint on it from Texas, so. But if you wanna talk to me ahead of time, please, please, please reach out and we'll make time this week before I'm gone. Okay? Any other department updates, Bryce, that you can think of?
This is a big one, this meeting is gonna be a big one.
Yes.
Kind of working on some mapping stuff, so we'll talk about that.
Yes, yes.
And then we're gonna talk about OHB as well.
Yes. So yeah, I think, and if you don't have anything, I think I'm gonna turn it over to the mapping side of the department. They have a lot to talk to you about tonight, so. Pretty exciting stuff. And I did share, so Bryce, if you wanna be able to.
Perfect, thank you.
Share it, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you Commissioners. Tonight, I just wanna introduce Tristan Denton. He's our GIS technician slash analyst. He started late June, early July, and he's really been able to add a lot of capacity to the mapping side of things. And one of my big outstanding items that I wanted to get to was replacing the county wall maps, which last time I think they had an official signed off by the planning commissioner update was 2015. So it's been a while. We've had several rezonings, more smaller rezonings, and then we had a huge one, right, with the backcountry zoning. So we needed a new zoning map to reflect that. This is gonna be one. The other corresponding part of this is an official roadmap for the county, but that one's gonna be coming later because that one has a lot more discussions. There's information in the road. We have road information that maybe we don't wanna put on the roadmap, you know, a lot of these like user desire trails and things that we have. So just a little bit more complex than the zoning map. But we'll present the zoning map. We have a couple different maps to show you with a couple different ideas to see what you as the Commissioners wanna see out of this. You know, it's gonna be our reference map. Once we get it finalized, hopefully after tonight, we can send you back with some feedback, or send you back to get some feedback from you and then present this in the next planning commissioner, or maybe in a couple planning commission meetings for final approval. Alright, so we have a couple different versions. There's the one in front of you, right? But it's really hard to see this detail, it's meant, and I'll get to. Why doesn't it? Stop the shooting, it's ready to do. This is not gonna work, is it? But it's a, so we can just scroll through it to see the different areas of the county. If you wanna minimize that one on the side, okay, cool. So yeah, starting off with the county zoning map, you know, the big, the big things we wanted to discuss are the light shading of the wilderness areas because we have a lot. Tristan's done a really good job of layering all the information in such a way that it's digestible and you can still kind of suss out what you're trying to look at in particular by looking at it. So you can see the multi-different, the multicolored zone districts. Then there's some hashes, and the hashes indicate different overlays. The only zone district that's not a solid color is the backcountry zone district. What you can see in there is kind of a tan hashing over the areas of the county. And that's just to kind of reflect that that whole landscape is not zoned backcountry. Only the private parcels within that overlay are zoned backcountry, right? It's still public land everywhere around there. We also have designated roadless areas in this county, and then within that, we have wilderness areas. And so you can see here, the wilderness areas are in this light gray shading. And then the roadless areas is kind of hard to layer that on, but there's this tan hash mark that goes around. And basically, anything above that, not towards the development in the county, is in that roadless area. When we were trying to put together the shading and everything, shading the roadless area just made it really busy, right? Because it actually covers quite a bit of the county. And then another thing we wanted to talk about is that the roadless area data as it comes from our official sources includes some of these mining claim outlines, right? Because that's private land, which technically is not roadless, within the roadless area. But my thought is that that actually might add to the confusion of what the roadless area is to have all these little hash marks in there and taking away from kind of the boundary where you know that from this boundary in is all roadless. So anyways, just gonna throw that out there for you guys to consider. But you can see that, you know, there's an inset to show city limits and the corresponding zoning around that. We do have one that's more specific to Letgo and zoomed in, but I just wanna show you this is incorporated into the map because, and especially with the streets put on there, right? Like, a lot of people don't know where the exact boundaries of the city versus the county are. I think a couple instances to me are like north of 12th is actually in the county, not the city, but you wouldn't know that because there's no signs. And then Chicken Hills in the county and not the city. So those are subject to different zones and not a city zoning. We'll get to the city zoning map a little later, but I wanna show you that. So yeah, this just has county roads on it, you know, some major Forest Service roads, but obviously not getting into those desired trails or the actual road network or trail network that we have in our county. You can see we have the scenic conservation overlays that's hashing along certain areas of Highway 24 and then a thinner area here along Highway 91. And, you know, the airport protection overlay, this is basically meant to incorporate all the data that we look at all the time or want as a quick reference. Yeah, you have some zoning in here, you know, the airport area, commercial industrial. So I think the one thing that I really, that's kind of outstanding, oh, and one thing I wanna mention is we have private roads with public access on here and also special metro district roads, which, so we have several neighborhoods in this county that have roads that are open to the public. There's no gates or anything, no restrictions on going in there, but they're privately maintained. They're not maintained, they're not designated county roads. So the big examples of that would be your lake subdivision and then all of Danar and the ELL area. So you can see there's just a different color of the roads down there that kinda show that they are still public access. Oh, Mount Massive Lakes is a similar one. They're still public access, but they are privately maintained or maintained by an organization that's not the county. You have the highways on there. And then we did some cleanup just to show like this whole area is RC whereas before it was kind of shown in a hashing symbology on the prior ones. And it has the border of the forest in there, San Isidro National Forest. So yeah, kind of basic, you know, just to talk through. I can talk through all the elements, but it's all the things you would want in a zoning map. What we're asking for, those are your feedback on symbology. If you have any colorblind friends, we'd love to hear what a colorblind person thinks of this map.
Mark's playing it home to my house then tonight.
I think that's like, no pun intended, that's been a blind spot of mine that someone mentioned to me is, you know.
He even has those glasses where he can like compare.
Nice.
The ones that supposedly.
Good, okay, so I would love to just, just get some general feedback, you know, to see. I think this is pretty distinct, but it was actually a map that I made that Sarah mentioned. She's like, wow, there's a lot of blues and purples on that same map, right? Which could be confusing for someone with colorblindness.
Yeah, it's funny because like I, these are like way prettier colors on that map. But I do, I felt the same way about the blues. I'm having a hard time on this size map making out the different colors.
For sure.
I thought Ludville was commercial industrial.
But this far away, I also can't see the, so I don't have to be at a map that size and closer than I'm right now to be able to make out any roads or anything.
Yeah.
And the hashing is like kind of, it all kind of fades, like, but it's really pretty.
Yeah, right, right, I know. We wanna keep it pretty, but also make it.
But I agree, then the green with the commercial industrial is a little bit. Cause they have, I'm just wondering if you want a different color for Ludville because on this, the fact that CI is green, it would be kinda nice if it matched and stayed that way. So maybe, yeah, green, or maybe Ludville just needs to be a different color on that map.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, no, that's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking for, right? Like, this is our opportunity to change anything from the colors to if you see any information missing. I do wanna mention one little zoning issue that was kinda hard to finally get solved. And so I did a lot of research and historical document searching and everything like this. But, pardon me. Two years ago, we were made aware that there's a new zone district in the county called RUR. It's not new, it was passed in 2001, but it was never incorporated into any mapping data. The, what really makes Lake County mapping fun and challenging is sometimes there's conflict between official sources, right? So the map, basically what I wanna say is right here, you see this little pink thing? That's business zoning. That's Moose Haven and the three houses next to it. The official map that designated the RUR had that as RUR. So I had to go through the documents to make sure that that stayed business and everything else around it and what parcels particularly were rezoned to RUR. So kind of, yeah, okay, this is an official map and I still need to do my research to figure out that the business zoning for Moose Haven existed. But yes, the Hayden Ranch parcel is zoned RUR. That was intentional. Aurora, who purchased these parcels, was the one that pursued that rezoning and signed on to it. And so they rezoned all of their Hayden Ranch. Aurora's actually maintained ownership of the stuff on the east side of the highway. This stuff now belongs to BLM, the bulk of the Hayden Ranch. And then the Hollenbeck Ranch, which is where our favorite gold mining operation is going on, is also RUR. And then Fire Station 2, that parcel and the surrounding acreage is RUR. And then a little bit more down here, 80 acres owned by the county called the Stork and Heron Plaza. So those combined are the official RUR zoning. But just so we all know, there's that little spot zone of business that sticks out there. We have some other spot zones of business that are kind of interesting. You know, there's a couple along 82. But this shows you there's been some rezonings in this area of the county, right? Some of this IM land has been rezoned into recreational. Some of this multifamily residential has been rezoned into recreational. And then you've had a couple CI rezones that are a lot smaller, probably hard to see on this scale of map. But up towards Ludville, we've had a couple CI rezones, including the one earlier this year for the animal shelter and Big Al's property.
Do you show all of the mining claims or is that just a?
Nope, this is the official data source we get from the Forest Service, which just shows the ones that actually exist inside of the congressional designated.
Should we check if anybody's on this one?
So yeah, these ones, these ones are where it really stands out, right? Each one of these, they don't have road access on a good day. They're above tree line and everything. But they're technically, you're able to build a road on your piece of property. So they, they stick out. But we're thinking that might add some confusion.
I usually just like do the gallery view really quick to see if anybody's.
We're just looking for other folks real quick, if anybody's trying to join us.
Um, yeah, so it works fine. So my thought is, like, I can read everything fairly well, like the shading for the background color and then the hashing for the backcountry kind of blends a little bit. But I think mostly you can see it, it's really the like roads, which I know we don't want to make super messy, but I'm just wondering if those need to be like just a touch darker or lighter, or brighter. Yeah, some.
Like, we can make them like a little.
Even if it's just like a brighter color or something. You know, like you have the yellow or something on here, but if it's just like a little bit more, like I see like an orange, I don't really know, orange and yellow.
Yeah, no, so roads for now, roads are just the tan red. This is, I can see where this is confusing. These dashed ones are Forest Service roads.
Yeah, the dashed ones are the ones I think I'm talking about mostly.
Yeah, we'll definitely clean that up and make those more apparent or at least just like a solid line.
Is the dash that the roadless area is different than the dashed Forest Service roads?
Yeah, exactly. And sometimes they're forwarded up right next to each other, so.
They are different? I can't, I can't see them.
Yes.
Okay. How are they, is it red dashed?
There's tan dashes, so tan dashing is for the border of the roadless area.
Okay.
The green dashing is Forest Service roads.
I'm not colorblind, I'm not sure I can see those.
Yeah, so maybe those two, maybe those colors just have to change a little bit.
Yeah, no. What do you say, Tristan?
I was gonna say, we'll be on a, a map similar to that size once it's fully printed.
Yeah, I think that's a good reference to see through like thickness of lines and symbology.
Yeah.
Good point. I wanna show you one more though while we're on it. This is if we took the same map but removed those parcels within, so I, I think especially look towards the Independence Pass area. This will be the, just to see if we like this one more.
Yes. Why, there's one parcel still hanging out there.
Because it extends all the way down to 82.
So then it.
Stick, yep, so it extends like a flagpole all the way into the district, but.
I don't think you need mining claims. I don't think you go parcel level information really on this map. I don't know why you would. Yeah.
Maybe I'm missing what we're, what the difference is.
So do you see how in this area?
Oh, I didn't really saw that. Okay, 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 okay.
And it just takes information out and makes it more clear.
Yeah, that's what I did.
It was just a difference between, this cleans it up, but it's not the official, official data source, right? So we're kinda cleaning it up and making it our own. But I think to get to the same conclusion or just have it, to have a better reference map.
Well, that's why you have thousands of layers that you can press online.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and then this one also shows you that the roadless areas has shading in this one as well. So you can see this darker gray is roadless and this lighter gray within that is wilderness. And so that way, at a glance, you can really tell, especially as we consider like future development and everything like that, you can tell at a glance that anything within the, any gray shading is pretty much, has some pretty substantial barriers to development.
I should know this, Bryce, but is the roadless, is, is wilderness? Sorry.
Wilderness is more of a.
Wilderness is above and beyond the shade.
Is above roadless?
Correct.
Okay, so the roadless isn't, the wilderness, the light shading is truly the wilderness, but the roadless incorporates the wilderness, of course.
It surrounds them. There are separate areas designated wise. It's not like the roadless incorporates the wilderness, they're just together.
I would switch those.
Yeah.
And maybe just another shade different.
Cool.
Darker, contrasting. Yeah, just another little.
Yeah, and I'm just like looking at this now too. Like, I think we wanna do something to spread out the symbology for the backcountry because it, it starts kind of clouding what's underneath.
Well, and the backcountry I think is such an important one too, that like, this is getting a little bit more attention, I think might be important.
I mean, that backcountry is for those other attributes or indicators.
Just totally different uses that have like, need to be there. Maybe just a little bit more contrast on that as well.
Your, your shading is so similar right now that somebody doesn't do a phenomenally good job with printing, you're gonna lose some of that, so maybe just a little bit more contrast would help.
Yeah, I think the, when Tristan and I were putting this together and kind of bouncing ideas off each other, what we realized though is that you don't wanna make the shading too pronounced by where it looks like so.
Cause a lot of zones are stretched, right?
Yeah, and then the backcountry, you know, what's tough is the backcountry also covers a lot of these gray areas. And so we don't wanna have too much of that overlap where it's like, hold on, that's a different shade of backcountry because it has the gray underneath it.
Oh, sure.
So that's where the hashing makes a little bit more sense, but.
Yeah, I like the hashing.
Maybe spreading that hashing out a little bit to allow more detail to shine through.
We can spread it out or make it a little bit tighter, yeah.
Yeah, something.
We can change the thickness or the, the, the intervals of hashing. The intervals of hashing, you can make it either smaller or larger just based on.
The intervals don't bother me so much, making them slightly smaller, slightly thinner would help. Yeah, yeah. And still, and still be legible.
See, I'm saying like a little darker.
Yeah.
The hash could be darker because it is a zone, yeah.
Like, yeah, so.
Cause I don't think you want it to thin, because I feel like if you got too much thinner, you'd start running into it looking like the scenic conservation overlays hashing.
Yeah.
There's, the only other hashing is a scenic overlay and it can change your interval of it. I think that, that might allow you to, well, you can try it, but yeah.
Did you write all these down?
Yeah, I got them.
There's.
You don't, I don't keep it track.
Well, this is great. This is exactly. The shading is much closer together than the other is already.
Yeah, and it's black lines, exactly, but.
And Zoomers, we can't really see if you like raise your hand, so if you have something to add, please just.
Shout out.
Feel like you can join in. Yeah, I mean, it looks great though. I mean, I think the zone districts are easy to see and those all look nice and that, like to Abby's point about just changing the city, I think would be my only recommendation.
Yeah, definitely. We can figure out something, because that's what I wanna get to next is, when Tristan and I were going through this, you know, our department handles building permits in the city too, so there's a nice little city map of zoning. But there was not that we could find a map that showed city and county zoning on the same map.
Yeah.
So you could say, hey, whoa, I'm on the other side of 12th, what zoning am I in then?
Don't touch on PUDs for a sec.
Oh yeah, sure, thank you. Thank you. So yeah, one thing we wanted to incorporate in is PUDs, right? Which are just that kind of special zoning entitlement. Hard to see, you'll see a little bit more on the zone, the city zoning map, but we only have a few PUDs. We have Grand West and we have Rail Yards, which we'll get to on the city, and then we also have West Woods.
And they are pretty visible on the map over there. At least you can see the crosshatch that we have for, um, on this end.
So you have the, the.
This is on the county zoning stuff.
So what their zoning was previously is the, is the underlayer or then?
Correct, yeah. And then just PUD laid on top of that. And that's just kind of following past practice because that can be changed as well. We can have a special, a PUD color, but I like, you know, kind of the overlay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Surprised that Rail Yards is only half of that parcel.
Only Phase 1. Yep, they have not touched the other.
They have three phases.
And two bits of that parcel.
And they're not building on that other, the higher bit yet?
Well, Phase 2, they've been looking at like a commercial developer that had been trying to bring in Hotel Noto, but I don't think that, I think that, the developer just told us last week that that couldn't fall through. And then Phase 3 has been purchased by fading West and they are looking at developing it.
So yeah, with that in mind, let's just switch to the city real quick just to kind of show you what we have going on. You have the map in front of you as well, but I really like the way this, this turned out Tristan, so thank you. This is awesome because it has all your city zoning, which is different than ours, kind of corresponds in some ways, but it's its own code. And so it means we addressed and colored differently. You can see some of the recent CI rezones, the one, the Big Al's parcel, animal shelter parcels right there in the green. And then we have the community field, Tabor Star area in green. But yeah, you can see that PUD on Phase 1 of the Rail Yards really stands out and as well as in West Woods. And then what's really cool is Tristan was able to take our building layer. So when they do our flight, our imagery flights, they actually make a layer, an outline of every building. So that is, you can even see there's a, there's the old elementary school and the new elementary school behind it because it hadn't been torn down when they did the flight. So that's the era this was done where we just got another flight. We'll get a new change finder data in the next couple of months. So if those are, if we do get that new building outline before these are up for approval, we'll put that in there. Otherwise, this is kind of what we're gonna look at. But I like the building outline because it, for those that don't know streets necessarily or whatever, it has a great paper reference. You know, you can see what the courthouse is or where the hospital is.
I would just like say the same. I know that that R1 isn't R1, is only that R1 in that top, like Edwards Terrace, that's the only place that zoning is. But when I look, and it's easier to see on the screen, the color differentiation.
Yeah.
But if I look at other parts in the print, it's so, it seems so similar, yeah. I just have, and then when you go, what's even harder, I think typically, is the legend and the colors look so similar, especially if they're like four away from each other.
Yes.
You're like, oh, I can't, it's too intense. I don't know.
Nope.
So just, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Contrast a little bit.
Exactly, sure. So yeah, this one is just gonna be for reference. We're gonna send it over to the city. And we're gonna have it in our office too, but, you know, not as official as the zoning map, but a great thing to have.
That pink, sorry, the blues and then that pink and the IM purple and the multifamily.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I know they're different, of course.
Oh, yeah, the IM and the multifamily look almost the same, but they look.
So yeah, IM, yeah. Almost at the same color.
But awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome work.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome job Tristan, thank you so much. This has been.
Yeah, you guys, this looks great.
Great. It's been awesome to have Tristan around and he's made a lot of progress on the assessors stuff and just making sure the assessors' information is up to date. And, you know, we want to do these and we're all up to date on our surveys and everything like that. So we're gonna much better respectfully where Tristan started, so.
Awesome. Thanks Tristan.
Thank you. And just one more thing I'd love to add is, um, I believe I sent these up to all of the planning commission as well as the B O C C a week or two ago. So you should have a super high resolution PDF to view and as you zoom in, it'll generate the pixels as you, as you do. It should just be super, uh, not fuzzy at all, really.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to ask a question, Joey especially, because you're on the Historic Preservation Committee. We did add in the Historic Preservation Overlay. Is that clear enough, that red outline? And we didn't want to go into shading, but we can.
Yeah, I think the red outline makes sense.
I think the outline actually works really, really well. Yeah.
And that was just kind of based on what the city has for their.
That's kind of what they did anyway, yeah.
Since we just expanded that purview, that's gonna be really important to have.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's great. And I think the red dots are big enough that they'll be legible regardless of the size.
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory that towards the core is inside and outside of that is not an overlay, but just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone.
That looks good.
Joey, is that changed? The boundary has changed?
Yeah, now it's the entire, well, the purview is the entire National Historic District. Now instead of just the retail core.
So the boundary is the same.
Oh.
Yeah, but it just expanded beyond the.
So this is, this is the new boundary. Gotcha.
Cool. Well, yeah, if you want to keep looking at these, um, we'll send over, we'll float to the top of your email inboxes with those high resolution copies that Tristan was talking about. And just please, this feedback has been great tonight, just kind of helping us look through from another perspective. What we need to do.
Look at it for a hundred hours, those colors are way different, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even need to see the colors anymore. I already know.
But, yeah, that, the, some of those are so close, a little more contrast to that.
For sure, especially in the other map down near the Twin Lakes side of it. I, I can definitely see where you guys are coming from.
Mm-hmm. But no, it's good to, that was the one question we had was do we want to go with our own data to remove some of that clutter of the mining claims in the, uh, roadless area and then we'll change the shading?
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel like we identify other parcels, so.
Right.
You know, that information is readily available, so it's not lacking by.
Anyone in the roadless area should be hopefully doing their own research a little bit more too.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to let you know, like, an ATV trail would be allowed in the roadless area, right? Whereas that would be absolutely not allowed. You wouldn't be getting another bike in Florida, so trails are allowed in the roadless.
Roads are.
But not actual roads. Even side, even two ATVs wide trails.
Are not allowed.
Are allowed in the roadless area.
You just can't, you just can't call it road.
You just can't call it road.
Oh, so like a four track.
Right, exactly. That's, that's just a workaround I've seen, but, um, but Forest Service, that language difference means a big deal today.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's kind of all we have.
Awesome. Well, thanks again, guys. That's awesome.
No problem.
So, um, I think good plan for stuff would be that we take the feedback and then bring it back for a motion for adoption on that with a, with a few edits.
Yeah, I'm thinking, just because our next meeting is gonna be a little different with Gateway and everything, maybe we can push it to the October meeting. If it gets that work.
Agreed.
One more thing to add is, um, I definitely would love to stay in, uh, not constant communication, but enough to where I'll send you a map. Do you see anything wrong with it before the meeting? I'd love to get it fixed. Um, or maybe like I fixed something and then it, that created another discrepancy that you might see just so we can make sure we have the best product we can, um, presenting next time.
Thank you.
Just, I wonder what, I think I know the answer to this, but we have the zoning and then we have a US Forest Service designation, distinct areas of roadless and wilderness. We don't, do we, concert, lands under conservation just came to mind as far as like use or, oh, do we not want to put that in here? Might confuse things a little more, not really the purpose of this map.
Right, I don't think, I think this one, we're trying to keep it more limited to zoning. Um, just because, you know, that would kind of confuse like going up Iowa Gulch, for instance.
Yeah.
That's all under conservation, but we, might be worth knowing that it's still at Forest, so.
Yeah.
But I think, but yeah, maybe a conservation layer on the, the road map would be good too, to add in with roadless and wilderness and then conservation. Just an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Thanks for your work Tristan, I really appreciate it. It's awesome.
Just checking.
Yeah, Tristan's been jonesing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're an interesting little, little slice. I had no idea the hatchery was that big.
I know. It was all the way up to that, yeah. Snowfield that never goes away.
Right.
Yeah, that's cool. Okay.
Is native lichen in the hatchery?
It's just outside of it.
Yeah, just outside in the wilderness, but, yeah, basically the whole Rock Creek drainage.
Yeah. Um, okay, move on to the OHV Special Use Permit update.
That sounds great. Um, so what, where, we were, um, CPD went to the Board of County Commissioners and asked for an extension on the moratorium um, so that we could finish up three aspects of the scope of work. Um, one is to create the Road Use Guide, um, that Tristan and Bryce are working on and then we'll engage, um, with Public Works on. Another was, um, the creation of the Special Use Permit. And then lastly, we're working on the revision to the ordinance. Um, in the revision of the ordinance, we're really working on, um, youth programming and diversion opportunities. Um, in the listening session that we heard back from the public, we heard a lot of concerns about, um, youth on OHV and some safety concerns. Um, so what, we're working with PROS and law enforcement to come up with some youth programming and then kind of a juvenile diversion opportunity. If, um, youth are on, uh, OHVs and there's a option to put them into a program to teach them versus ticketing them, um, that we're working on, um, a resource like that. Also, um, our OHV track is, my understanding is pretty coveted and people come from all over to use it. It's one of the best tracks, I believe, in the state. And so we're working with PROS to look at an opportunity for youth to have some programming there. Maybe some opportunities for mentoring and some different things like that. So one of the things our takeaway from the listening session on the OHV is that we needed to provide some, uh, public service support around, um, youth in the community. So that's one aspect that we're working on. We're also working on, um, um, looking at ways to deter use on areas like adjacent to the Mineral Belt Trail, um, between like Ninth and 12th Street. In those areas, and a lot of, um, users there, commercial, at the community, thinking commercial industrial, so Community Field, that's another area that, you know, we're just trying to find, uh, we're working with law enforcement, um, to come up with some alternatives and maybe there are physical barriers or impediments to keep, um, those areas free from that kind of use. Um, and then there's also some cammering, um, opportunities that are, uh, gonna be used for enforcement as well. But, um, what we're asking for is your input on the Special Use Permit. So the Special Use Permit came about because while we amended the code in about 2016, I believe, Heather, you may remember, to introduce outfitting and guiding into the land development code. At that time, a lot of time was spent on discussion of if, um, outfitting and guiding was an appropriate use within the industrial mining zone district. And so it was determined that it was an area that we really wanted to prohibit the use just because of the inherent risks as well as the potential for trespass just with the woven in tapestry of ownership on the east side. So for, uh, and certainly the safety concerns, um, the inherent dangers that are present in the area. So after that was decided, it came to our attention that a lot of the outfitting and commercial guiding that's being done is only on roads and roads aren't zoned. Um, so the county wanted to look at a tool to look at how to manage, um, motorized, uh, commercial use on county roadways. It also is a permit now that will give them the ability to look at any type of special event, commercial use on county roads. And so, um, what we want to do is send over this permit for your input. We're gonna have a couple of work sessions coming up. So today is just kind of like, if you have any questions about OHV and the work that we're doing on it, the moratorium just disallows any new outfitting and guiding, um, to come on while we're doing this work. Um, and we want to bring this new tool to the Board of County Commissioners to be able to use to permit uses on county roadways. We're looking at some cost recoveries and that impact fees associated with that to the pricing of those permits. Um, future work that's not gonna be done at this time, um, we've been talking, uh, there, there's a possibility that this work will eventually shift to the PROS department as they really look at like, um, capacity, uh, care and capacity, um, studies to look at the sustainability in between commercial and public use. Um, and, uh, future things about sustainability. Um, so right now, this work is really just designed to bring the tools forward that, um, the county now needs to be able to regulate the use on county roads. And then eventually, um, with the development of the reorganization of the county and, and the development of the, um, um, PROS department, um, it makes sense that this would kind of shift from the oversight of CPD into PROS for future capacity and sustainability and programming. Um, so that will be, I think, potentially where it may end up. Um, and, uh, CPD will continue to be supportive any way that we can be. Um, another proposal that we brought to the Board of County Commissioners is after we finish the scope of work for the moratorium, is that we continue on with a registration program, um, for, um, locally. So, uh, the state does our licensing program, I guess. The state requires, uh, OHVs to be registered, but leaves it up to the local jurisdiction on how they want to do any other kind of, um, licensing or fees or registration program. So we've, um, kind of worked with all our collaborators and stakeholders and they've brought forward the, um, benefit of having kind of, um, as we go into kind of that sustainability study, um, future work. Um, if we had a good idea of our user groups, um, through a registration program, that would really help with that capacity, um, analysis and sustainability, um, uh, reporting that would maybe help inform future, um, uses in the county. It may be a point in time that those feasibility, um, studies and sustainability reports would come back that potentially maybe we can't sustain new commercial operations. Um, because we really do have to kind of centralize locations where a lot of these, um, opportunities exist and it's either on, in the east side or around Turquoise Lake. And so, um, I do think that, uh, there'll be work done in the future about sustainability of that. So right now, we just want to get the tools, uh, for, uh, Special Use Permit so, um, the county has the opportunity to look at operations on non-zoned county roadways. Um, because we had the tool for zoning to look at base of operations and operations on land courses, but no ability to consider, um, taking a closer look at the impact on roadways and permitting that.
Can I, can I just share my screen real quick?
Yeah, that sounds great.
So we just, a big part of this is analyzing current use on these roadways, right? And what kind of capacity we have to add further uses to it. So Tristan was able to create this really cool layer that I'm really excited about. We created a heat map, mapping all the special events that currently exist in Landville. You know, so each special event is one, so it's one person doing all of them. But shaded in purple to pink to red to then white, you can see if we map all of the special event routes on top of each other, you get a heat map of current use. And so you can see, you know, there's, there's some on the east side for sure. Uh, pretty concentrated down here in the C of C trails because there's a lot of events down there. And then you can see the going around Turquoise Lake because there's several big special events that utilize the same route. We're starting to get that heat kind of showing up. And then, of course, definitely down here towards the dam. So we have more data to add in there. That's just kind of an example of where we're going and what kind of tools we want to present as part of this process.
That's really strong. That's good.
And this is per one person racing on each event. So if we, we'd have to multiply it based on however many people were on one event. So you'd probably see that Turquoise Lake ended up being shaded a lot more than what it's looking like right now, but, yeah, just for.
Yeah, one person did the race, that's shown the same as 1,700 people did, um, like race for this. Just routes rep, map on top of each other, so. Um, but, yeah, I, I think this is exactly what we want to start creating towards, yeah, measuring impact. So this is something that I never was able to do, so thanks Tristan.
Well, and on the mapping side of things, like, not to do with roadways, but as far as like the youth thing, like my kid, that's one of those kids that's out there on a strip bike and I told him many times, you have to be really careful about where you're riding and where you're not, but they have no clue where they're allowed to ride.
Yeah.
And so it's like, if they have to register in town or something and they have to get a map, it's like, these are the areas you're allowed to ride, then there's a lot less argument when they're not in the place they're supposed to ride. You know, so anyway, just the thought. I mean, I'm not sure also that we want to be like, everybody go ride on these trails, but I think at the same time, I think we have to be, we have to have the areas where you can do it. Because, I mean, there's just so much of it that's like, sure, you could just say county roads, but there are things like Elk Trail and some of the other places that you're, that are more trail, that are moto, right? So I don't know. It just seems like we should probably think about.
They're not legal.
Oh, they're not legal, yeah.
That's the whole thing with the east side.
I thought the top part was, no.
That map would be a huge help. It's, uh, yeah, the east side, it's amazing. I mean, people are just riding on the roads now, so. Having a map where you can see where you can ride and where you can't, there's so much adjacent trail. Maybe they just don't know the trail's there. I don't know. Right? It is definitely getting to be a bigger problem, yeah.
Right. So, and, and also we thought that it'd be a good, um, super transparent, super helpful to the community and then, um, just such a great tool, as Public Works has, um, different projects and, um, you know, every year there's annual projects in different areas that would be under construction or. So it'd just be this great tool that we could really inform the public with and have, and hopefully have less user conflict, um, with. Um, and then the Special Use Permit to layer that on. Then there, there's also, um, it just ensures good players because it, it would be a revocable permit. It may not be able to be issued again if, you know, if, if there's not a good history of use. Um, and so we've worked with Forest Service, um, to sit down, Bryce and I sat down with Forest Service and talked about their Special Use Permit process to kind of help us inform, um, bringing that forward. So, um, we will send out a packet and I, I meant to get it out to you, uh, for this meeting, but I just, and all it is, is just a Special Use Permit, um, so that you can take a look at it, tell us what you think. Um, know that it, it's the tool that the board would use, um, to consider approval, um, or of any kind of use on county roads. So be it, uh, approval, conditional approval or denial, um, but we just want to make sure that it, it looks like a useful tool and love feedback on it. So, um, we will share that out. Actually, I think it might, is it on our website?
I shared it with them.
Oh, you already, oh, yay, 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 okay. Um, so you already have it. Thank you, Cece. You're amazing. Um, she, it's like she reads my mind all the time.
Always good to have one of those people.
So, um, so you have it and I love any feedback that you might have on it. And then, um, we can also let you know when we schedule those work sessions, if you would like to be engaged as we bring at least this part of the work forward to the board. And I would just continue to say that more work we get to speak will need to be done. Uh, but this is just kind of the first step in the direction of giving the tools needed to be able to make some informed decisions.
The, sorry, remind me, and the road, road map, the road use map and the S U P will be completed at the same time. To me, you can't really have one without the other.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, those are, those are deliverables by December 1st will be the Road Use Map, um, the Red Use Guide, um, Special Use Permit and, um, a draft of the ordinance.
So you run, and this is elementary, you run special events through a special use process. And so is it annual then reaplications for the big events? Which means we have no, e- every Special Use Permit is, is an annual permit. We don't have like three-year permits or anything. They're, they're an annual, but they're not, are they pulling a permit for the 50 versus the 100 versus the run versus?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There, there's so many intricate details to every single one.
Yeah, oh, yeah. There's so many intricate details to every single one. The timing, schedules, locations, the maps, the courses, I mean, there's so many just details. Everyone has its very own operational plan.
So, then the, like, your tour guides, are they just getting it, are they pulling it for the year and getting like their route approved? Is that the intention?
That's the intention, is that they would.
Yep. And so, then it may be conditioned upon, so we want to make sure that we got the.
Right, or trips on that route.
So, then you can get good metrics on, and like.
That'll.
Yeah. Because I bet the east side would be a lot darker colored.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, this is just, you know, this is only incorporating a couple of those Leveille trail series events that they're doing, the trail marathon, so.
Well, it just seems like, yeah, you're making it consistent across operator types.
Yeah, trying to align with the way the Forest Service handles their geographical, you know, kind of, they don't, it's not a monopoly, but they grant a certain operation a geographical area. And that's just how they operate. And I think that they've had some success with that.
Yeah. We've opened it up to a lot of public input. There's still a link on the website where you can continue to provide input on it. We also recognize, we went out and we talked to a lot of different stakeholder groups. We've recognized motorized and non-motorized users of county roadways to, to just include in the information that we bring forward in our final findings and recommendations. So, you know, being cognizant of the difference in, you know, between seasons, between summer users and winter users. And so, it is, you know, it is nuanced. And so, we'll bring all of that forward in our file, information that we provide for the decision-making. Cool. But exciting to, and I think the other update that we would have, and I'm sorry this isn't on, I should have done this during the update. We will be bringing tomorrow the contract for technical assistance to the Board of County Commissioners on short-term rentals for this next portion of the work as we look at going forward into a policy recommendation. So, we have selected EPS as our consultants. We've got the scope of work that we are happy to share out with all of you. And we can get that out tomorrow so that you can take a look at it. But we're bringing that engagement request to the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow for approval. So, pretty exciting to know that we're narrowing in on our moratorium, what kind of scope of work. Thank you, Seth. Yes, thanks. That sounds great. Thanks for the update. The, oh, I'm sorry. I have one other thing before adjournment. Go ahead. I was gonna send out the bylaws to everyone. I feel like I'm going to probably be preaching to the choir this evening, but I do want to just look at attendance a bit because there, I just want to go ahead and be, just bring it out for discussion or with that, that we do, we've been taking attendance and, and I think the bylaws do, and I'm really not pointing out anybody in particular, but it just, I just think it's.
We're having a hard time getting informed with being very worried about discovering meetings for our faculty members in the last few months, so.
We're also gonna be looking at going out and advertising again from the members because Lupe is no longer a part of our membership. And so, we are gonna be looking to run an ad for some new membership. And I think eventually, there will be probably a staff just asking the chair and vice chair to consider maybe the attendance standards necessary to maintain membership as just kind of bringing that forward as a, as a thought to consider. And that we do need to go out and start advertising for some, some new members. So, certainly get the word out far and wide. And we'll let everyone know before we actually post the vacancies. But yeah, so we'll just go ahead and bring you, kind of, give you kind of the history of the attendance and then we'll review the bylaws. But we, we might suggest that it's time to consider at least looking at that.
What is a full board? How many positions? And then, how many alternates?
Five regular members and two alternates.
One or two alternates is what we've worked on over all the years, one or two alternates.
So, we went to two this last round so that we felt really rounded because we had so many good applicants. So, we have really stayed at five and one, but this last time we went with five and two just because we really had a lot of great applicants when we did. But, you know, slowly, Erin left and then some guy named Bryce left and Lupe left. So, we just had quite a bit of.
The next day, he's just sitting on the other side of the table.
He's been demoted.
Demoted myself, I guess.
Yes, I don't, like, the county wins. So, that's pretty exciting. But yeah, and I, and I guess I would say that please think about people who you think would be not necessarily well-versed in what planning and zoning is, but like, care about our community. And pushing them to feel comfortable applying for this without that knowledge because I think there's tons of people out there that I've talked to that are like, I don't know anything. I'm too scared to do that, you know? And I think we have to really like, that's why I forget who convinced me to do this. But it's like, I didn't know anything back then either. And so, it's just like, you learn it and we can teach it and we can do all of that. But what you can't necessarily teach is like, the piece of the Leveille part. And I think that, to me, is the most important thing, which can really identify people that might be good and have good sound mind to sit here and advocate for the future of our community. I think that's the most important thing, so.
And then, do you, we have prioritized, but we should, we need to, like, onboarding for boards and all that. So, I wonder if there's, I feel like all the conference opportunities just passed, but if there's, or maybe we could set up like a, kind of a new onboarding and with this, you know, by our own internal workshops or work sessions that happen. I think that'd be valuable to kind of be more consistent in offering because it's hard to, it's hard to be sure that you're consistent in communicating like, the, the real connection that you all should have to staff and outreach that you should be making to do your learning and have that confidence to ask the request.
And I think that probably brings up, you know, some, I think for a while, I'd been sending out some different opportunities through DOLA and like Rocky Mountain Land Use Conference will be coming up again in the spring, which is an amazing conference to go to. And there'll be some other APA, American Planning Association conferences coming up. So, I'll just make sure for a while, I was really sending out those opportunities. I'll make sure that I'm sending those out too. So, there's a million great, there's Planet Zen, that is just an APA-based educational platform. Are you, there's all kinds of topics that you can watch different webinars on. It's a pretty amazing resource. So, make sure that we're getting those tools out. It seems like we did that DOLA training. I think you all remember. And at the end of that, I was really good at kind of giving out some different resources and I'll just make sure that I'm sending those out again. If you're interested, Chrissy is really great about, you know, doing, as we would bring on some new members, doing another training. She, she actually really likes doing those. So, she, we could usually get on with her fairly quickly. If we want to do another one once, we might seat some new members.
And like, there's a lot of other opportunities in water and environmental health or other kind of aspects to the decisions that are made in the room across the planning commissioner and the board commissioners. And we could do, we could kind of pair that together on like what those lists are. Because I think there's a lot of webinars or round bed lunch, you know, sessions and things that.
Yeah. We'll try to work, you know, eventually, I'm just brainstorming here, but we might be able to create kind of a calendar with links to them so that you, when we have those resources, we can put them on a calendar that we, you know, that we can share with you and we can settle those opportunities on there for you.
So, I think if, if a few of us are willing to be mentor buddies too, like, just to have somebody that we could be like, what does this mean? And obviously, not discussing applications that specifically, but being able to explain how.
Using a staff report and just, I think, just practically just work through a staff report because that involves the COT plan and all of those kinds of.
I just think of like lots of times, we've had lots of new people on and it's really easy to, to, to think that when you're deciding on somebody's permit or somebody's subdivision, that you have, you have to stay within this purview, right? You're like, you can't just be like, well, I just don't like that there, you know? You've got to stay. And so, trying to like really teach that piece, I think, is like, is the big one. And also what that allows, right? Like, there's lots of ways that you can, you can do that. And so, I don't know, having, having somebody, because I know that this department should be their first layer, but you guys are also super busy. So, if they just feel like, maybe we just adopt somebody when they come in is like, if you ever need anything and these guys are busy or anything like that, please feel free to reach out and I'll help you go through whatever. And that just might help and feel a little bit more comfortable for anybody new coming in. I just think that's the biggest barrier we've had of trying to get good, good people to stay on is just like, it's, it is kind of like, there's a lot of important stuff that happens in here. And I think if you feel like you are lost in it, then you may not be interested.
Yeah, that is good. That DOLA training really does help in any of that, like quasi-judicial versus legislative process. And yeah, just no conflict of interest or how it had to come to a finding.
Agreed, yeah. Yeah, I like that a lot.
And, you know, and we could even just do like a local, you know, internal kind of sit-down work session where we talk about the script and, and actually the outline of the, the outline of, of the agenda and the public hearing process. And, you know, we could, we could dive into it just a little bit more and, and, and really understand that staff is your resource. Like you said, we are busy, but if it is a pending application and you need anything, you know, we've expanded staff. You have Bryce, you have Cece, you have me, you know? So, between the three of us, at any point in time, you should be able to reach one of us. And if we don't know, if, if one of us doesn't know the total interest kids sees of it, we can certainly generally help with things and then we can come back with whatever it is. So, we have increased capacity and able to be able to expand our reach when you need us. So, that's pretty exciting.
I think if, because I won't, I mean, I'm not making any promises, but I wonder if an easier like agreement just for even today, that calendar invite piece, like just an FYI. Like if, like, the planning commissioner was comfortable with a group, planning commission group, board commissioner and staff, CPD staff, like if we blast those out when we see them, when any of us see them, like, I'd be okay with that. Is that acceptable to the planning commission to receive that and just?
You're doing the line, you're the like, training.
Yeah, and he's like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like staff, we just push out. So, we make three groups and then we all have access to those groups and we can all push that as just kind of an FYI of.
Helping with those pieces, sure.
That's, I don't know.
No, I think that's great.
Not assigning to do that, but I think, I think it's easier to get permission to do that rather than wonder if we're like filling calendars or inboxes. I would rather be over, yeah, inundated and be able to filter that than not know at all, so.
Well, we have a great onboarding plan. Now, we just need some onboarders.
So, so I would say right now, we have four regular members. Jamie has remained an alternate. We haven't seated him as a regular member. So, we at least have one vacancy if not two. And I would say if we could come up with two, because it's nice having two alternates. And then, just talk about the membership in general that we have right now and, and then determine, I guess, actually, what our, what our vacancies might be.
Would you mind also just sending out, when you have a chance, the terms?
Yeah, oh, yes.
What we have left?
Yep. Yep, we just did that. I had to just do that for our resolution beginning of the year, so. We've got the terms. We'll send those out.
Yeah, I feel like we have that at the top of our.
Yeah.
Box right now.
And then, I know we had on the agenda to revisit our map and everything. I unfortunately, I have to be out of here by 5:30, so we can start it and then I can just leave happily or whatever you guys are.
I don't have anything prepared for that discussion tonight, so. It's more like.
I feel pretty happy.
Keep that in.
Going a little early.
Yeah, and keep that in mind while you're looking at this. We're gonna set this one in stone, but that's also a beginning spot for a future land use discussion.
Great. And, and too that we have talked to community builders. We have not, I don't think, have a proposal from them yet, although we had spoken about like November to November, November to November for an engagement. So, we just need to get back in touch with them about doing, that's our future growth planning facilitated conversation. So, that we're preparing for an eventual new iteration of the COT plan.
We do have a meeting set up with them during October.
Okay, awesome, just to kind of narrow that out. Awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, we'll have more on that coming up once we can kind of figure out that opportunity. But I think they would be really great in helping us and they were really excited about it. Now, they didn't really have the capacity for short-term rentals, but the future growth planning, they were a little.
I don't have the capacity. Okay, cool. Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom have any questions or anything? Okay. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Bye. Thanks, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
Hey, have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Take care.